Right, we'll move on councillors to item nine. We're in the access underneath venues management and service group.
Thank you. Terry, would you like to preface this particular discussion?
Sorry. 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 Okay. Okay, so, how would you like me to conduct this?
Well, if you've got any comments to make on the report, via to questions you can, but if you don't wish to or you don't need to, that's why we just opened up.
No, I'll just make one comment. There is no question that community access is important to the business. It's going to become even more important to the business moving forward. And we're actually going to resource our team with an individual that will be responsible to build community access. So we see two arms for our business. One is exactly what a number of you have talked about today. The stadium has two purposes: to galvanise community and to drive economic impact. There's no question those are the two factors. So in terms of the community galvanisation, we are going to work even harder than we have ever worked before to get more access into that stadium. We want the city to love it. And so, without going on, if there's any questions, please, far away.
The first sort of question is just, I'd find it quite helpful if we were having this list, if you just put the stadium markets times 48 in one line, and then we could actually look at it so as the dozen or so other things would be highlighted better. And I'm not sure, and I'd like to know more about how you calculate the value of some of the things that are happening. I was particularly intrigued by, I think it's Sinclair Kindergarten, eight and a half thousand dollars' worth of benefit, or not of benefit of cost, I'm not quite sure what it was. And I'd like to sort of just get you to tease out a wee bit how you come up with the figures you come up with as to the value of those things.
Can you worship, Andrew Lowney, working particularly with Terry's staff, Corin Haddie, over a period of time on this, I guess, this transaction through the service level agreement. My understanding is that the fundamental simplistic basis that tried to work on as a, I guess, a baseline, is that if that group, irrelevant of who they were, were to commercially want to use the stadium, what would be the charge to them? And that would be the basis for the benefit that is recorded there.
The difference between the next and what they will charge?
Yeah, that's the baseline that was drawn. It is simple, it is crude, but it was the one that was agreed on, was the only one that was reliable to start with in terms of the service level agreement and the recording and reporting of it.
So that's sort of based on hourly rate or something?
There's a commercial, right, yeah.
My understanding from conversations between Andrew and Corin about this, there are a number of products the stadium offers to customers, and they vary from use of the pitch, use of the stands, use of certain areas, use of certain facilities, catering, non-catering. So the group needs to, Corin negotiates with the community group, what do you actually need to do what you want to do, not what you'd like to use. You may want to have a full catering for everybody that attends, but that's not what we're going to do. What do you actually need? And that is the baseline that is drawn.
And through the chair, sorry, there are costs ongoing with things like that. There's cleaning, there's preparation, there's picture repair. All of these other elements are factored into a cost, and it's a case by case.
So could we have some, in the future, obviously not with us, and the reviews will bring it out probably, but how that comes about, I mean, if for instance, a kindie's using eight and a half thousand dollars' worth of something, are we actually providing them with some food or paying somebody to do cleaning which we otherwise wouldn't? Or is it the value of the fact that they were using it for three hours or something, it would be sort of useful to know whether it was real added up operational costs?
Through the mayor, my understanding from the work that these two gentlemen have been doing on this service level agreement is that is the intention, to work with this now, because the work that has been done with community groups, to identify what the real costs are, what the post-performance costs are in terms of cleaning and so forth, what are their expectations? Because there are some expectations from community groups about use, some of which are realistic and some of which aren't, in terms of what their event involves, how much, I guess, toilet use there is or how much use of other facilities. So it's a learning curve, and my understanding is that the aim is to do that, is to be able to be more confident about the detail.
Thank you. Through the chair, that's the case. This has been a start, if you like. We'll certainly draw more detail down, and I don't think this, I think we've worked off a base, sort of like a base template, if you like. But what we'll do is we'll be a little bit more sophisticated moving forward in terms of detailing what requirements are, what real costs are versus what we charge.
Councillor Bannister.
In the list on 9.12, councillor Calvert has already alerted us to the spread of market events, stadium market events held through the year. This is 2013 calendar year. If you add up at an average of more than $5,000, apparently total expense of running each market there, you add them up, you come to a cost to the rate payer of over $200,000 to run the stadium market there for a year. How can you possibly justify that kind of cost to run a market when, for instance, the Otago Farmers Market runs not a fraction of that and caters to a lot more people?
This is foregone revenue, so it's not a cost, it's foregone revenue. They get a cheap rate for a commercial venue, and the rate gets nominally added up because the stadium are told, look, we've given you the $750,000, we want you to make sure that you have $750,000 worth of foregone community access at the very least. All the conversations with Terry was that he would like there to be more community access within this, well, well over and above $750,000 worth, but this is how we hold them accountable for $750,000. So it is foregone revenue. If the stadium market, the Sunday market, were to pay full commercial rates, i.e. another $5,000 per Sunday, I suspect what would happen is, we'd have to get the market operated, but I suspect they may well just stop operating.
Can I also add to the chief executive's comments that if the Otago Market did pay commercial rates, they would have exclusive use and they wouldn't have to be flexible in terms of their use in case there were other more commercially based events required? There is an amount of flexibility in that, it's not a totally exclusive agreement, it is a community benefit to fit in with the commercial practices and opportunities for those to stay.
I'm not clear on what the chief executive said just now about having to come up with the $750,000. Are you saying that these total expenses that are listed on 9.12 are in fact not expenses at all? That they are simply an inflated fabrication to make it look like we actually spent $750,000 of the community grant on community access?
I don't think I use the word inflated fabrication. What this is, there is a commercial rate that the stadium charges commercial operators. They charge community operators a lower rate, and that is foregone revenue. We've said to them, we want them to have at least $750,000 worth of foregone revenue, that's a volume of community access that we want them to have, and that we want them to add that up in order to prove to us that they are providing that amount of community access, cheap subsidised community access, if you like. So that's, we gave them $750,000, we make them account for that as foregone revenue, that's what the list is.
And if I can add to the chief executive's comments, and I can't preempt what David would say, who organises the markets there, but I think if we charged full commercial rates, there would be no market.
Obviously, but these full commercial rates that we're talking about, a commercial rate surely has got to reflect the cost of providing the service. So does it cost $5,000 every time the market goes there? So does it actually cost $200,000 to run the market in a year?
It comes back to the previous comment that was made. We're going to be more detailed in terms of costing, but there is real costs. You have to have staff, there is real cost to bring the guys in, we have staff members who open up early, we have cleaning costs, we have installation costs, there are costs, there's real costs. Now, the detail, certainly we will probably enhance this report moving forward to highlight those costs.
Right, if we were to move the market from the bit of concrete inside the stadium to the bit of asphalt outside the stadium, if we were to move it from the concrete inside the stadium to the asphalt outside the stadium, the $200,000 of costs that are listed here in total expenses would be reduced to roughly how much if they were just to have the market in the car park?
I haven't got that answer with me here now, I haven't got that answer, I don't know.
But I mean, even roughly, operating in a car park must be...
Your question's been answered councillor. Right. Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, worship. It's not clear to me whether the items that were eventually not included, QTV, FIFA events, et cetera, and has that money, that money hasn't been paid back? That's still foregone revenue?
That's just, they weren't included in this, yeah, they weren't included in this particular report, no.
But they also didn't pay?
No, there was, they didn't qualify, we didn't see it qualifying as a community event.
But at some point someone had decided that they did?
Yeah, I mean, these are commercial, we're talking here commercial, these would have been commercial operators who would have paid commercial rates or would have been, not deemed as a community, warranting community access.
I understand that, but how are they on the list at any stage?
If I can through the chair, the original list, the arrangements were, under the service level agreement, there are some parameters or guidelines for what would and should qualify for the consideration of this funding. What was decided by Terry's staff, Corin Haddie and Andrew Lowney and the teams, was at the start, put it all in. If you think, if somebody's applied for it, said I'd like community consideration for community funding subsidy, whatever you want to call it, for this event, put it in the line, then we'll make the decision, and if the decision is no, it doesn't comply, then it doesn't get it, but it's remained on the list. So I guess it's overly transparent.
So they have, so they did pay that? Oh, okay. Picking up on the stadium market issue, and nothing against the stadium market, but given that is almost half of all of this community use and pretty much all of the rest of it is local sports groups, are you comfortable with the cross-section of our community who are accessing this? And if not, what do you intend to do to broaden that?
I think we need to engage, we're putting a person on staff to actually focus on community moving forward, and I think that role will engage more with those community groups to make, to build awareness about the availability of the stadium, and then for us to then make an assessment on, you know, those events that fit the criteria. So we want to encourage more activity from community through the stadium.
Do similar arrangements exist, I should know the answer to this, apologies, for other venues, the Cleaneroy or the Town Hall or otherwise?
Look, all I can say for other stadiums around, this is unique for me, Adelaide Oval, which was a member's own venue in Adelaide, was closed doors, so, you know, we're not that. We're here to encourage all of the community to come through, and for this, for the stadium, we want many, as many groups as possible coming through the stadium.
I guess my question was, there will no doubt be community groups who are better suited to other Dvml venues. Do they also have access to subsidised use as a community group?
Through the Town Hall, it's where we want to be, yeah, it's where we want to be.
This is a report to deal with the $750,000 service fee agreement only, so what happens outside there isn't covered by this report, but there may be other opportunities.
I just think it was a useful comparison to make, given that there are different, different community groups have different needs, and perhaps their needs may not be met by the Forsyth Bar stadium.
I don't disagree with this report, it's only about the use of the Forsyth Bar, $750,000 service fee agreement, so that's why it doesn't deal with other things.
Thank you, good segue, because my questions were going to be about, specifically about the relationship between this fund and other Dvml venues. So when we originally set this up, the Town Hall was still under renovation, I don't think you'd get taken over the railway station venue. Clearly there are community groups and community events that are better suited, and possibly even some of these on this list are better suited to other Dvml venues. Would it make a difference to Dvml's bottom line to have this fund accessible to community groups wanting to use other Dvml venues?
And to answer the earlier question, I think you're, in terms of community access, absolutely 100% right. So, yeah, I agree 100%. Again, we're in our infancy with this, and I think there's a cultural shift internally to say, if we are going to give community access, we need to get out to market and understand what the community wants. So in answer to both of you, my answer is, we're addressing this paper today, but philosophically moving forward, I think there is scope for us to open the doors for all of our venues.
It doesn't answer my question though, because my question is specifically pertaining to what the impact on Dvml's bottom line would be.
There would be no change, because they're all under the same umbrella, it's how we utilise that fund to give access. And what we've focused on is stadium to date, but I think there is a need to do more. So in answer to the question, there'll be no impact.
So given that, if there was a will around this table to do so today, we could move to ask staff to open up the service level agreement?
We would have no problems, and to be honest, we would have no problems whatsoever. It would be a sensible move, to be honest.
Thank you.
I can feel the decision without any thought coming. But my question is around how the costs are determined. I have assumed, but I may be wrong, that in assessing the foregone revenue, if you like, or which is built up at least in part from what it would have cost you, that you take into account a proportion of the overall overheads. It's not just whether or not you have to put a cleaner in afterwards, but the fact that it costs a certain amount per year just to have the stadium there to be available. Does that agree?
That's part of it, I think that's part of the cost, but there are real costs that are, that are variable, that come with each of those events, yeah.
But I have the question because it does affect that question.
Councillor Staines.
Thank you, worship. The stadium market has been raised, and the fact that some $200,000 of community access funding has gone towards that. If we do have any information on the economic benefit that flows back into the community from providing that market space for businesses in this area to sell their wares?
We have no, we haven't followed up on any revenue flows or economic benefit that's associated with the market. We could probably do some work on that in conjunction with David, who organises the market. We probably do need to run some more detail around that.
It just stood out, admittedly it's had a lot of funding, but the fact that it actually is potentially one of those items that generates a benefit outside the stadium from a cost that's incurred inside the stadium, and at the end of the day, that cost subsidy is a rate subsidy, so it's like economic development.
And we'll factor that in, to be frank, we've really, our focus has been to endeavour to help the market grow, grow numbers and work with them to improve the experience there.
Just looking at the items you didn't fund, I assume that they, well, to my eye, it looks like a couple of them may well be business related expenses, i.e. we're trying to attract FIFA, we have got FIFA, so I assume that they've fallen, and rightly they should be, it should be a cost of the stadium. The other ones, I assume, are the stadium, or Dvml in the stadium, deciding that they wish to undertake some community good, social good activities of their own right.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
I'll come back to your question, but I've got councillor Bezette.
Mr Davies, in your opening comments relating to the last item, you mentioned about engaging with the, or you're hoping to engage further with local organisations to encourage them to use the stadium. Can you envisage a time, and it might already have been reached, where $750,000 is insufficient for the subsidisation that you might come back?
Look, I think, I think there's a number of steps before that, I think it's understanding where the use of the 750 will take place, and I think once we start to open the doors of maybe Town Hall or Dean's Centre, that might shift in terms of demand, and I think we can only address that as we move forward. I think our issue initially is to understand those groups that want to utilise the stadium, refine our criteria around what warrants community access, et cetera. But, look, I can't, I can't comment on the levels that may be required down the track. As is about servicing what we have now, as best we can.
Well, given that we don't have any surprises, would it be through the service level agreement that we've negotiated that sort of, you'd come back and say this is what, this is what to require?
Councillor Vincent Park.
Thank you, can I just ask, coming back to the market issue that's been pretty well to reverse so far, is there any competition for the use of that space at that time?
There's not. Occasionally there is, if there's a major event where we have to move the markets out, but I think that's only occurred probably twice in the last 12 months, so on occasion, yeah.
Okay, so the reason I ask is because I'm just concerned about the use of this term foregone revenue, because if there's no one else wanting it, there's no foregone revenue, and you're lucky to get any. So I just could ask, I'd ask if we could be a bit cautious about the use of that term? I mean, there's only revenue foregone if you had a full paying customer available for the space, so it's not foregone revenue, it's a top-up.
Totally agree with you, totally agree, totally agree with you.
Councillor Wilson.
Just going forward, I just want to understand that we've been told here, because I think they were probably put in by previous staff, of six non-community access that got virtually free, but this doesn't mean that you haven't given away other free usage in the past. And I actually think it's really important that we do understand what free usage has been given, and I appreciate there'd be a whole lot of different motivations, some which I do understand commercially and some that I won't. But would you be adverse in this idea of transparency of telling us when you're giving away free usage even if it isn't part of the 750?
Look, it would have only have occurred if, in the mix of a commercial deal, I think we're very cautious about any free access at all. And in actual fact, the new policy moving forward which we've pushed is that there is no free access, even at this, the community levy is the lowest we would offer to anyone. Now, of course, there's different circumstances, as Mr Bannister mentioned earlier, about, let's say, a major concert where, for commercial reasons, you may waive a fee to come, but you'll return revenue in other ways. So I think it's about case by case, but as a philosophy, we've said internally, nobody can give the venue away for nothing.
Okay, taking that further, I'm actually almost disappointed not to see and hear the OUSA, who run, who come to us and tell us they can't get the stadium when they want it, and yet they're not listed as a community group, which openly, you know, they run the concerts for you, they're open to Dvml, and yet they're not included in here, which I find it really odd.
Yeah, I'll delve into that, but we do have a really strong relationship with them. Oweek is getting bigger, the Zoo during Highlanders is powerful, and will be growing. And so we're already engaging with them in terms of ways to deliver greater access and experience for them. I think our relationship is as good as it's ever been, what I hear, and I think that will strengthen.
Now, and I'm slightly nervous about the suggestion going around the table, and I totally understand why, it might be looking at other Dvml venues, but I look at one of the ones here that I can't understand, and that's the RFU Awards Night, given away as free, when that is a venue that should be paid for, that every other awards night would be paying for, $810. And the equity and fairness, now we've got basketball coming to us and saying, why can't we get a cheque for rental and pay for rental in Edgar Centre? And I actually think this, you have to make sure you're not taking away from other venues, things by providing this particular venue, appreciating that sometimes it's about getting people to come into the stadium and look at it. But you need to make sure that you're not doing this at the cost of private venues or other council-owned venues, and it's a really hard...
That's a fair question.
Going forward, how are you going to manage that bit up?
And I think it's a fair question, and I think that's why we're resourcing it, to be honest with you, and for transparent, we, we, it's, we've never had a resource to actually focus on this, so we're going to resource it, understand the dynamics of the market, work closely with council, understanding what we need to, how we need to price it, to report back in terms of what costs up per event, et cetera, there's a myriad of things.
Can I just ask, Mick, in reporting on the much wider picture of venues that are under your purview, would you mind, or a survey of your managers of those sites, like the Edgar Centre, understanding if they are starting to get feeling like they're missing out because of this? Because it may happen, and I would like to know as to be heads up at it, I'm not going to criticise Terry's group of ears doing that, because we put them in that conundrum, but I think we need to know whether that's happening in the other venues?
Councillor, through the chair, I mean, the relationship of my department with the Edgar Centre is through a service level agreement to provide community access, which, as councillor knows, is in excess of $800,000 a year. I know there are conversations going on between the stadium and the Edgar Centre already about basically not providing conflict in that area, and that had been for some time. My, the indication at my level is that there are no problems at the moment, there is a concern about there being problems, but there are no problems at the moment, that dialogue and that relationship is working.
And just through the chair, that's exactly, more articulate than me, but our resource will work closely with those other parties to say, look, you know, this is where we're at, where are you at? We don't want to eat into your lunch and things like that, so we'll have a much better handle on this segment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Lawrie.
Now, look, it's all right, I'm at risk of making a political statement, but I think in view of the fact that it's only to be noted, I should just...
Bannister, do you have a question?
I wish to propose a motion.
Yeah, well, what I propose, I'm aware of that, thank you, and I will take it. What I intend to do is take the remaining questions, I appreciate that your motion doesn't substitute for this one, so we're still going to deal with this one. So what I'm going to do is take the remaining questions, deal with this recommendation, and then break, because I'm aware there's another motion as well, because we have an hour on the two of them, and we want to do them justice, so we will...
I also have one more question.
Okay, rather than, councillor Wiley, and then Mr Bannister.
Terry, I applaud the community engagement and bringing an extra person on and going down that road. I'm also really happy to see that Ripper Rugby and St George's School Rugby have used the facilities too. Is there a field usage, you know, how many days you can use the field and the...
We've got the beauty of having probably one of the best operational teams in New Zealand, if not, you know, the world. The surface is hardy, I don't think we would risk putting a community event if there was a major event on, we'd manage the timings on that, but at the moment, the amount of use on the surface is... But at the moment, the amount of use on the, on the surface is absolutely fine, and the team we have can turn things around very quickly.
Okay. Also, following on from councillor Wilson's question about OUSA, I was intrigued to see if there was not more, or does not get covered under this agreement, university and politic usage?
We have a separate agreement in place with those groups, and again, we're enhancing that, working harder, we will see a significant uplift in usage moving forward.
Okay. And finally, in Saturday's paper, there was an article about youth drinking and pupils like loft or play. If a high school came to you and said, look, can we use the concrete slab for a under-18 non-alcohol-free party, what process would they go through and how would they be able to accomplish that?
We're very strict internally on health and safety. We have, we have licences that we have to adhere to, and we'd be very strict around alcohol, the alcohol issue is a big topic at the moment, and I highly, from the university and our team are working closely to deliver events that steer away from binge drinking and alcohol.
I'm thinking more year 30.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have an obligation through our licences, liquor licence, et cetera, to deliver a certain standard, which we always, we enforce. I mean, we're at risk, and so we're vigilant when we get requests.
What I'm actually thinking is if a high school came to you and said, look, we want to run a...
I've got no problems with it, providing they're fitting within all of the guidelines of covering our licences, et cetera. I have no problems.
Could I ask you, councillor, and I speak for Terry here, no misconception that they would be eligible for the community funding?
I'm not sure. Again, if it falls into, oh, sorry, if it falls into the criteria, yeah, sure.
And finally, what happens, you get to 75, 750,000 in October 31, what happens to the other events? Do you just say, you go over it, or...
I think that, we'd have that discussion with the DCC, but I'd find that very unlikely to happen. Look, I think we'll address that when it comes. I think our issue is about delivering better quality at the moment, making the stadium, feel aware that the stadium is available, and let's address that when we move forward, I think, yeah.
Next question, councillor Vandis.
I've been trying for some time to suggest ways, in fact, several years now, of reducing the operational costs of the stadium. I haven't been trying to close it down, as been suggested. One of the suggestions that I've made is that we replace the turf with an artificial turf. Now, I understand that there may be some issues for professional rugby, but in terms of the community access that we're talking about here, if there was an artificial turf there, would that significantly improve the range of space and turf use of the area, rather than having to put community access on the concrete slab?
If I can tell, it's part of the review, which is with the chief executive, if you would like to comment from my perspective, I would suggest that it wouldn't be the ideal solution. This is only my, my suggestion, only because you're limiting yourself around major events that will drive economic benefit to the city.
Right, but major events aside, if there was an artificial turf there, I'm talking about the community access aspect here, not the major events. From the community access point of view, would not a turf significantly improve the range of things you could do there and the area available?
An artificial surface? I can't, I can't answer that, because I don't know what the size of the market is, so I can't answer that. I mean, we're meeting, we're just meeting this requirement with what we've got now, so I can't answer that.
Okay. Going back to the list on 9.12, about a third of the way down the list, the Highlanders' first 15 competition lists an excess of $18,000 for this event in terms of total expenses. How can you get $18,000 worth of expenses for a community event for a Highlanders' first 15 competition?
Look, I can't answer that without knowing the detail behind it, so I'd have to check it out. I'd have to, I'd have to delve down and find out from the team.
So who would have provided that figure of $18,000, which, when you add to the figures from the market, is a significant proportion of this community access?
There would have been some, there would have been a basis on the spend. I haven't got it here, I can find out.
Okay, if you could probably, possibly afford that, that'd be great, thank you.
Right, councillors, someone like to move the recommendation on page 9.1?
I'm going to move.
Sorry, councillor McTavish, councillor Lord second, any discussion on that, this is for noting, any discussion on that? Councillor Vandis?
In noting this, there has to be some suggestion that we somehow accept the validity or the reasonableness of the report. Given that we're looking at a total expense of over $200,000 for running the stadium market, and other expenses here, which I don't believe are even remotely credible, I don't feel that I can note this report without having some possibility of objecting to, A, what's presented, and B, the suggestion that we continue to fund $750,000 for this kind of return to the community. So the people that I believe voted for me to be here, I don't believe any of them would agree that we should be funding essentially a stadium market to a tune of $200,000. I don't think that any of them would agree that we should fund a Highlanders' first 15 competition to the tune of $18,000. And by continuing to go with the $750,000 community access grant, that is effectively what we're doing. We're taking ratepayers' money, we're using it in the most lavish way you could possibly imagine, if these figures are to be believed, and I don't, to subsidise...
Can I just clarify there, are you saying that these figures are false? Is that the statement you're making?
I'm saying that these figures are not credible.
And that's not what you said, you said you didn't believe them. I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I don't believe, I personally don't believe that these figures can be true.
They're false.
I believe they're not credible. I don't believe them. Credibility is the issue here, your worship. Without putting words in my mouth, that is exactly what I believe.
But I think it's a very serious thing to say that these are not, that what you've got in front of you from the start is not true, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that they are not credible, the truth of it is not something I can know, because the questions I've asked haven't been answered. Where was I? Yes, my reasons for voting against the noting, that by noting, we would somehow assent to what is presented here in this report. I don't believe that anyone with any reasonable idea of the value of $5,000, or $18,000, or $200,000 can accept what has been presented here, and that would be the reason that I'm voting against this recommendation.
Councillor Thompson.
There is an ask question around the expenses and the calculation of that. If I could just give you one example, my very rough and approximate figures, but if you divide the annual rent that the stadium pays to DFL, DVL, by 365 days of the year, you get roughly $11,000 to $12,000 a day in rental cost alone. So if, for example, you were putting a stadium market in it for half a day, and you were attributing on a pro-rata basis the cost of rental, then you would get $6,000 roughly just out of that alone. So how you go about measuring this is actually quite important. And it is clearly a combination of direct costs, which have to be put in directly to meet the particular activity, and indirect costs, which exist and will continue to exist regardless of whether there's an activity there or not. Secondly, if you go back to when this was originally proposed by the former CEO, I think we all actually understood that there was a problem that we were trying to solve, which was that community groups wanted to use the stadium, and if they were charged a commercial rate, they couldn't. And so by putting this fund in place, we did, we achieved two things. One is, we ensured that community groups could use it, and secondly, that the fixed costs of the stadium were assisting to be met through this, and that was the quid pro quo. So I personally hope you don't throw too many resources at trying to measure this dreadfully accurately. I'd rather you top the cost out. I think if we understand what the overhead structure of the enterprise is, it's not difficult at all to see where some of these figures come from, and you could quite feasibly argue that they're low. So, you know, it's there, it's, you can argue about what proportion of the overhead should be costed into any particular activity, good luck to you if you've got the right answer to that. I'm happy to support the motion on that basis.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson.
I have no doubt why we did this, I mean, it was another subsidy of sorts to the stadium, and that was quite clear when we made the decision to do this. However, you know, for the 50,000 people who have managed to attend these events, that's a $15 per head charge, that we've provided access to those people and got people through the door. I think when something's new, and given the context of how divided this community has been about that, that's not necessarily a bad thing, getting people in the door to see it. I have taken great heart in having Mr Davies here for the first time, and his quite refreshing attitude to the questions, and his consideration of some of the questions we posed to him, and his, I think we will get a very different report next time from what, from his answers. And while the world may not have been perfect in the past, I think that we, this is just about noting, acknowledging the past and why we set up this fund. Has it done its job? Yes, it has. Has it done it as well as I might want? I can't see any women's rugby there, and I can't see quite a lot of other uses that I'd like to see there in arts. But that isn't what we asked, and if we didn't ask for it, then that's not the stadium's problem. So to that end, I will be supporting the motion.
Councillor Stone.
I'll be supporting the motion, and I agree with the comments made by councillor Wilson. I'd also done a little bit of quick maths, just taking the stadium's budget, which, if we add it all up, comes to around sort of 12 million, if it was going to break even, is the amount of money it requires. Divide that by 365, divide it by 12, because there's probably only 12 hours in the day, it's assuming you can do it every day for 12 hours, it's $3,000 an hour that would need to be got every hour, every one of those 12 hours. So I don't think the charges, the charges that are being used to nominally break out the community benefit are false. I think they are pretty much what it would be. If you go around the other direction and say, we have a $226 million asset, it's actually a hell of a lot more per hour to get a return on that, or even to break even against the cost of that money. So I think that's a red herring in this. We did put this fund in place to give our community access, where if they'd had to pay the commercial rate, they would not be able to do it. By providing access to the community, the community is getting some value back out of the stadium, they're getting to see it, some of the people who will go to some, say the markets, may well not be people who are going to see a sporting game, so they gain a benefit. So I fully support noting this report, and I fully support the ongoing funding of community access.
Thank you. Councillor McTavish, do you want to...
Just briefly, thank you, your worship. Yeah, look, I, I think that this is, I value this report, because I think it acknowledged that it's not quite right yet, and that there is ongoing work to get it right, and that's, that's great. I think it's, you know, this is the first year of this, and talk about increasing diversity, and all of those things are great. What, like previous speakers, I do acknowledge is that a proportion of this is fixed cost anyway, and if we weren't putting this money into the stadium, that fixed cost component into the stadium and terming it community access, we'd be putting it in anyway as an additional subsidy. So it, so it doesn't matter whether or not it's called community access, what we're actually doing is ensuring that there's an additional $50,000 coming in via community access that wouldn't otherwise be able to pay for full commercial rates. Not $50,000, which was contributed by the groups themselves, as far as I can see, plus community groups are able to use that. There are a couple of things, though, that this does flag up for me. I think the first is that any subsidy will always cause a distortion, and what we're seeing around the community grants table is that groups that previously wanted access, or had some form of perhaps cheaper access to the town hall, are now unable, or it is less, they are less able to do that. It means that they are going to the stadium instead, to a venue which perhaps is not quite right for them, and equally, there are other groups who choose not to go to the stadium and not to use that, and not to use the town hall because they can't afford to. Now, that to me seems like a silly situation, and yes, I acknowledge that it may cause other issues, and we'll deal with that in another motion, but that's why I think work to continually refine who we're actually targeting for what audience, and how we, that is important work, because having cultural events in the stadium may not be the most appropriate place for them. Having, I mean, I see in this report, it does concern me a little bit to see that you're starting to target schools now, with my community hat on. Actually, schools may be better off having their community events in their communities, so that that continually strengthens those communities and makes them accessible to their physical community. So I think there are complexities here. I don't think that it's about maximising $750,000 just for the sake of doing that, and we need to ensure that the quality and the appropriateness of those events is kept at a high standard. So I guess part of it is foreshadowing the other motion, your worship, but I think it's a good first step, and it's all...
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
Thank you, thank you. Now, what we will do, we'll take a break now till, say, five past, but after five past, and then I'm aware that there are two motions, one from councillor Vandis, one from councillor MacTavish. And Terry, you're very welcome to join us for a cup of tea.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Righto, councillors, we will kick off now. The situation is that we have two proposed motions, one from councillor Vandis and one from councillor MacTavish. So councillor Vandis, can I invite you to move yours, sec, second or, and we'll deal with it?
Thank you. I would like to move that council reduce the community access funding from $750,000 currently to $100,000 until genuine community access costs can be shown.
Is there a second? Laxus for one of the second.
A little lack of crowd.
Councillor MacTavish, can I invite you to move and sec, second or, the same way?
Yeah, sure. Well, the wording, Jenny has got the wording, because it came via the chief executive.
Well, do you want to just read it out?
Yeah, that council directs staff to examine the costs and benefits of adjusting the community access service level agreement to allow $750,000 worth of community access in any DVML-operated venue, and report back to council.
Second, councillor Stones.
Mister Chairman, can I, can I just comment that that also fails the same grammar test? The direct should have, the direct should have an S on it?
Councillor to collect the ballot singular, thank you, sorry. No excuse for bad English. Look at what the problems university walked into having with us.
Thank you, David.
Order. Councillor MacTavish, can you, do you want to switch to speak to this? It's second to the start.
Just very briefly, I think I've made most of the points that I wanted to make around it. I appreciate that it may be the fact that this, or may be the case upon reporting back, that staff identify that this wouldn't be a good way for it, but I think it's at least worth investigating to try to enable a slightly more equitable approach to our community groups, because whilst the stadium is an excellent DVML venue, particularly for sporting activities, it's not so much the case for more arts-based stuff, and I think that is a bit of a problem. So I hope that staff would also work with the community development team on this, because because I think they have seen some of the issues coming up through community grants.
Councillor Kev.
I'm close to ecstatic that we've finally got a resolution that suggests that we would examine the costs and benefits of anything and I'm really for it.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm just wondering, and I can't word it, but a second part to this is actually having an understanding or maybe the, um, the reporting on KPIs for other groups that we do, like the Tago Museum, who also give out a lot of community um access and us understanding that because I think that's part of the balance. Um, and we've got agreements with them already. Um, and it's not to take them away from this and I don't want to complicate this, but I also want to understand that bigger picture in the city and whether the mover and secondary are happy for something like that the community development staff in preparing the report considered dialogue with or liaise with other venue hire groups or um agencies to consider what they do for community access service levels or something, just to get that bigger picture.
All, all venue hire operators or a specific, because that's pretty.
Yeah, I, I, well, yeah, I don't want all, I, I think the, the ones that we've already got a, a relationship with through service, service level agreements because that could actually include things like decosts.
Well, I, I would welcome, I, I just think it has the risk of becoming, um, and, and I don't, I don't want it to be that. Just, yeah.
Right, um, councillor, who's next, that councillor?
Could we not have a resolution and can you allow Mick to go and have a chat? This will be Mick's staff that are doing this, not Rebecca's. Um, um, but let's have a discussion about potentially what we can include about community access to other events um without having to put a full-time person on it. Would that be okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just do that. If, if you can make a note, maybe send an email saying we'll, we'll make sure we cover off talking to those providers about what other community access has been provided.
Right, councillor Staines.
I, signaling this, I fully support it. Um, I think we have seen organisations that have, have used this facility in the past being unable to have access because of the, the, the transfer to DVML and the cost associated with that. So, if we look at the overall direction of this, I would be surprised it didn't work when we get the report back. At the end of the day, we've chosen to invest seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for community access um directly through DVML and directly at the stadium. Expanding it into uh the other DVML venues does not in any way affect DVML's revenue stream. All it does is give community organisations a greater selection of a venue and a chance of a more appropriate venue. In terms of the other venues that council has an SLA with, all of those venues, I suspect, do provide subsidised um community access in some form or other. I know that Tuatou does. It may be of interest to uh pull that community access component from those uh organisations with an SLA just to see what in fact our total expenditure on community access to uh overall is. But I think this is a great change, it will be a great change and I'd be surprised if the recommendation from staff doesn't support it.
Councillor Watty.
I, I'm, so I'm just trying to phrase the question in my head. One of the issues I see with this is that, are you intending to see more organisations have more meetings? The reason I ask that question is that I'm not aware of any organisations that struggle to have meetings around town as it is. So, to sort of look at it and go on that ability. Where I look at the current agreement and look at the stadium, I look at the, you can't replicate that sort of facility anywhere else. So, for example, if you're looking at Ripper Rugby, if you're looking at the Highlanders Schoolboy Rugby or uh the Community Market, it's not like you can take that and move it to some other facility as such. And I think that's what makes the stadium unique in what it is. Now, I'm also thinking in a sense of, you could end up taking away a lot of the meeting revenue that's been driven around town and some of the private enterprises that actually have an economy by hosting some of these meetings. So, all of a sudden, you're saying, okay, well, the DCC, as I read it, or the DVML are going to start opening up their properties for a lot more meetings, um, you know, taking away the income from the current facilities.
I, I've interpreted that as a sort of question, so I'll allow the mover to clarify um the intent.
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure where meetings has come from. Um, the specifically, the town hall is usually used for things like concerts and um cultural events. Um, I think that that's the sort of thing that would fit with the SRA in terms of what would be, yes, any closed meeting wouldn't meet the terms of the agreement in terms of public access. So, I'm not quite sure where that comment has come from, but it's very much concerts, public, open, cultural events which currently aren't particularly well catered for by the existing arrangements.
Perhaps I could um clarify that a little more, um, when I, as I speak to it. Um, my understanding with the town hall and with the whole town hall complex was that traditionally, um, and this is before my time, um, the mayor had the right to offer a cut rate. I think it was about half price for um use of certain parts of it. Uh, when I came into office, um, the, the town hall was in pieces and so there was no use of it anyway. So, uh, it wasn't something that I, a, a right or a, um, a prerogative that I ever exercised. However, since it's been, um, since it's been re- refurbished and been opened again, I have had occasion where I have wanted to assist groups doing certain things there to keep their costs down. And they might be benefit concerts or community events or certain things like that. And I have found it, given that now DVM, DVML are running the town hall, I've found it um a little embarrassing for me and a little awkward to be dictating to them when they're running a place. So, I would welcome um a more formal arrangement where we know, um, and, and I don't necessarily have to have the delegation at all, um, but where we know exactly what the position is. Because there are, there are events and, um, as councillor McTavish says, concerts. I can think of two um benefit concerts that were run, that have, one has been run and one is about to be run shortly in Glenroy where it was in the interest, the community interest to give them some kind of cut rate. So, otherwise, all the money that they would have earned for the benefits would have gone on paying the rent. So, th- those things come up and I, for one, would welcome a more formal arrangement to facilitate that.
I guess the, one of the other examples I'm thinking of is if you took Mayfield High School with their school production, what would stop them from coming to council or, and, or DVML and asking to use the town hall for their production rather than going to the Mayfair?
Well, I think that will come into the benefits of.
Absolutely nothing.
That's what the. Councillor Law.
Well, I, I would guess I would say in response to that, absolutely nothing and that's the whole spirit of the idea. Um, the only thing is if, if what councillor Vannevis referred, the one thing I would be concerned when I know, for example, that I got the price the other week to hire the town hall was three thousand seven hundred dollars, it doesn't make a compare, it might be in DVML's interests better to keep that seven hundred and fifty thousand the way they've um done those figures and start loaning the town hall out on a regular basis or something. But I do see that it ticks off the other boxes. For example, people like the youth orchestra and St Kilbride's band that have actually asked us for money. It may be a way that we can actually, without spending any, any more money, free up some of that seven hundred and fifty thousand for something that we do consider is more uh a better spend than perhaps some of the things that councillor Vannevis thought weren't going to speed so.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
Councillor Vannevis.
Um, in the, before the morning tea, councillor McTavish said something which I, I agree wholeheartedly with and that, and that was that any subsidy will always cause a distortion. What we're talking about here is a three quarters of a million dollar subsidy which uh was supposed to, in the last year, uh, allow a whole lot more community access to the stadium. But if you look at the list of stadium users on nine point one two, you'll see that very few of them are actually new stadium users and that the seven hundred and fifty thousand supposedly spent um allowing this community access is, in my view, farcical. If this current proposal, that this distorting quarter, three quarters of a million dollar subsidy gets extended to the town hall, what I foresee is us sitting here in a year's time with an extended list of these same users of the stadium, supposedly having um community access, which they seem to have before anyway, uh, being added to with a new bunch of users um using the town hall and this being paraded as uh some kind of um success of community access. What's already been suggested across the table by a number of councillors is that in fact the community access to the town hall, being a very similar venue to the Regent, being similar, if not in size, at least in style, to a number of other venues around the town, uh, that additional community access to the town hall will be at the expense of other venues around town. We have an oversupply of capacity in most of our venues around town anyway. And that what this motion will do is uh simply broaden the range of um events that would otherwise happen at the Mayfair, the Regent or whatever, um, to the town hall and again, be subsidised in this distorting way. Uh, I don't believe that the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar subsidy is actually for uh community events at all. I believe it's simply just another subsidy, another one of the names that we use to uh make the stadium look as though it might be able to break even. I think even councillor McTavish admitted that if we didn't have the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh subsidy for community access, that we would be paying it to DVML anyway in a bigger bailout. Um, so, given that it's not really a community access subsidy, it's uh just another way of throwing another three quarters of a million dollars at the stadium, I don't believe that extending it to the town hall as well is actually going to have any benefits for genuine community access. As I believe none of these are real, genuine, community access uh events either. And for that reason, I'll be voting against it.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I share councillor Vannevis's concerns around the scope of groups currently accessing this fund at the Forsyth Bar Stadium, which is precisely why I will support this motion. This isn't about um competing with private providers of meeting space or shutting out Ripper Rugby from use of the stadium. This is about saying that if we have a commitment to supporting our community use council-owned facilities where they wouldn't otherwise be able to, we should extend that access to as many community groups as possible. And this acknowledges that not all of those groups and their needs will best fit the concrete slab at the end of Forsyth Bar Stadium and that there are other council-owned facilities or potentially um facilities that we have service level agreements with currently that we can leverage in ways that will allow them to better, uh, allow them to better meet their needs as a group. So, uh, I'll be supporting this motion, thank you.
Councillor McTavish, you write a reply.
Thank you, I just want, um, I don't want to dwell on that, I just want to offer two points of clarification given that my commentary was commented upon. Um, my admission that we would be putting further money into this state, into the stadium if we didn't do it via the service level agreement. Um, I think it's important to clarify that I was referring to the fixed cost component of that um contribution, not the total seven hundred and fifty because clearly there are some additional costs that the stadium incurs because of this agreement, which um is part of that, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Secondly, um, I did say that any subsidy will cause a distortion. What I should have specified further is that part of that will be intended because that's the reason why you subsidise things is so that you get an effect which you wouldn't otherwise be achieving. Um, and some of that may be um unanticipated. And I think councillor Wilson has very articulately and clearly identified some of the potential risks around expanding this, um, the terms of this service level agreement. And I think we do need to be very cognisant of those and I think the reassurance from the chief executive that this um piece of work will include um those other entities with which we have service level, level agreements deals with that to a degree. So, I look forward to the report coming forward, thank you.
Thank you, all right, I'll put it. The motion's on the screen, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Right, Terry, thank you. For your attendance and your contribution and all these four regents. We're moving on to item thirteen councillors, um, postheating conversion of Moana Pool. So, we've been jumping around a little bit, as you are aware, that was because we shifted the stadium stuff to the first thing this morning. So, on to item thirteen. Welcome, Bill. So, this is specifically about um the wood chip conversion proposal and the, this is really in a sense an update. So, is there any thing you'd like to add to your report before we, I just try to open for questions?
No, that's fine. I'll just straighten the questions, your worship.
All right, questions, councillors? Councillor Wilson.
Um, I understand this project and I welcome the, um, moving forward on this project. What I'm, the, the question I have is about the recommendation. It's understanding that if this happens, I mean, this will come back to council before we actually go to the next project anyway. But further, do we have a mechanism in place, which I should probably know, that if there are savings, those savings aren't necessarily a win for Moana Pool, they'll be a win for the energy investor save work? Is that how it would work? That any savings?
The, um, uh, a normal budgeting approach is if there is a reduction in the energy costs for Moana Pool, it would simply come into the budget, so there'd be a reduction in rates somewhere within the system.
What, and so this, then this is the key bit for me, it shouldn't necessarily be a reduction in rates.
Well, there'd be, there'd be a decision that either the council will make or.
At a later date.
Yeah.
It's just building up that ability, as we did yesterday, to talk about investing to save, feeding in as a caperous model to other energy to save projects. Sorry, totally wrong council, apologies.
Not, not caperous.
I think for clarity and for press, I think it's caperous you were referring to.
I, it is, I think it's, the other contributions, not on the scale.
Um, councillor Ensign Puck.
Um, thank you, Mister chairman. Just a question about the, um, one of, one of the possibilities if a request, a proposal were to be agreed to, and that's in respect of the availability and, and um security of wood chip supply, given the tuing and throwing with some of the wood processes locally. And I'm not sure if Tago Chipman is actually operating them at, I don't think it is, is it? Um, are, are you confident that there is going to be an ongoing supply of chip? Should that be the way you finally proceed?
We have asked the question of one supplier who would be reasonably well-known to you, City Forests, um, who is a supplier of the raw product. And we've had a conversation with the purchaser of the raw product that turns it into chips and they're very upbeat about the supply availability.
Further questions?
What did we do three years ago? I'm having a burp, your worship.
So, we moved, is there a second? Councillor Wilson? Move councillor McTavish, second to councillor Wilson. Councillor McTavish, do you wish to speak to us?
Only to thank staff for having done the investigations in the most cost-effective manner that they could dream up. That's great and look forward to seeing the results of our paper.
Councillor Wilson, any other speakers? Councillor Vannevis.
Um, I've been very keen that we look at a, a major electricity cost for heating.
I've been very keen that we look at a major electricity cost for heating Moana Pool in the past and to do something about it, because I understand that the wood chip cost, which now replaces LPG, which used to be electricity, as I understand it. LPG was already a significant improvement on the electricity cost, but then the price of LPG's gone up. And I'm just wondering, actually, I should probably, should have put this as a question, but do we have some economies of scale with City Forests being able to produce chip for this? And do we have a situation where, unlike the LPG price, which then went up quite significantly, do, can we look forward to a more stable cost of energy for Moana Pool? Because we have an interest in City Forests. Is that sort of reasonable?
We haven't considered the relationship with City Forests in the context of this. They would most likely be a supplier to a supplier, if you like. They'd be somewhere in the value chain. But we haven't, haven't assessed whether or not there's a benefit. That would be fairly certain of a, in any event. So our approach would probably be to approach it on an arms-length basis. All parties are able to, able to bid. We'd expect that City Forests would be a participant in that somewhere. They may, they may not. But anyone who would stump up a wood chip solution would have to have a supplier. Pardon, councillor.
Councillor Benson?
Let's follow that up, because I'm now becoming more concerned that while there might be synergy with a company that we own, one way or another, producing the chip, you now introduce yet another party into the, in the statement you just made, as I heard it, yet another party into the equation so they can clip the ticker on the way through too. That would a context of talking about savings?
Through, through your worship, City Forests doesn't actually supply anyone with a wood chip product. They supply the wood. They actually supply logs and other companies chip it, so.
City Forests is, however, the major operator of the taga chipmunk, or one of the two partners in taga chipmunk. They sold it. Beg your pardon.
Councillor Lord?
That was stupid.
Oh, Graham. So the chipmunks have sold it out of town.
Councillor Lord? Bill, to the chair, I was just going to ask, do you know what sort of volumes they require cubic metres a day or tonnes or whoever they measure? What's the expected requirement?
I don't know the figures.
Yeah.
But the one purpose of this report is to reassure you that the quantity could viably be handled at the pool.
Yeah.
If that's what's behind it.
Yeah, no, no.
Why don't I take it on notice and not get you the number?
Yeah, if you can, but it's not. I wasn't trying to read anything into anything. It was just a...
Councillor Hawkins?
I'm a bit nervous about this, because when we went for Malachus, these are gas. We were told it's going to be a saving. Now all of a sudden, the saving's blowing out the door. I'd deal in with a multinational company that was coming to New Zealand, and they were going to put in wood chip boilers. And their nervousness is that once we change so much over to wood chip, that the price will start going up and up and up, and we'll be in the same position as we are now with the LPG. And as for the wood chip, as councillor Benson Pope says, we're bringing in a third party, and we have to do that, to get the drying of the wood chip and get the moisture down to an acceptable level for burning. So no matter how cheap we supply to them with City Forest log, we won't have any control over the final produced product.
So through the chair, one of the things we'd expect to see through an RFP process would be the degree of commitment that the supplier of ultimately heat would be prepared to bring to the table. So as you've seen in the context of the lighting upgrades, at, in the library, for example, contractors are prepared to guarantee savings. That obviously has a, has a cost, there's a risk and reward balance for those suppliers, but they are willing to do it. And to the extent that we put a value on that certainty, that's something we can also trade off.
Can we, can they guarantee that supply and measure of saving over what period? Is that unforeseeable?
Well, through you, through the chair, it would be the contract period, if you like. So it could be ten years, for example.
Councillor Van de Wissens? Well, actually, have you got, have someone else to add, because you've already spoken?
Ah, yeah. Basically, it was just, I was wondering if you'd considered the possibility of a Taga Regional Council emissions requirements and possible changes to them as well. I understand that there have been no standards arranged by them yet for within the urban area, that they are in the process of doing them. And I'm worried about a potential six A type situation where Taga Regional Council might come along and say, actually, no, we've decided the emissions have got to be X instead of Y.
Through your worship, that, that was considered as part of the viability, the particular emission standards, and was considered not to be an impediment by at least one potential supplier. But that would have to be made absolutely certain in the context of a changing weather.
Would, would you have direct discussions with the O R C in, in the next step of this process?
Yes, that's one way we could approach it. Ultimately, though, it would again be a requirement we put on the supplier.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for indulging me, your worship.
Sorry, councillor Hall, you have something else to say? Can I just say that this is the last double up I'm going to allow. This is becoming around the table and back and forth a bit, and I understand why. But we've got a motion in front of us and we need to work through it. So councillor Hall?
Just in what councillor Van de Wissens brought up, the E D S charge for the city is at its limit in the O R C. A company I've been dealing with presently have had to hand back their emission from one business to get consent for another. So the emissions are harder to get nowadays.
Further speakers? Well, I, I support this. Two things I'd note, and councillor Wilson alluded to it. If we had, by the figures that were provided to council three or four years ago, if we had done this three or four years ago, we would have paid it back by now. And it wouldn't matter. We couldn't get the wood chip anymore, because we wouldn't, we'd be still in a better situation than we would have been if we'd continued with LPG. So I think this has been a long time coming, and that's certainly not laying out the feet of the current start. But I note also, just today in the newspaper, there was a comment, there was an article about central government encouraging biomass energy production in Southland. So I, I think that what is looking like happening is that it's, there's much more of this coming into the market, and therefore there'll be more suppliers coming into the market. They'll become more competitive. And they will, they will keep the price where it needs to be. Of course, it will be vis-a-vis other forms of energy. That's the way the energy market works. But they will also be a check on each other. So I'm confident that with the resources that we have around the city, that we will never run out of the raw material that would be needed. So I think this is a good initiative, and the sooner it can be, what, through the bit? Councillor, no, councillor, who, who moved this? Councillor McTavish, you want to say anything else?
I think it's clear.
All right. I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Harry. Thank you. Now, councillors, the, I've had a request from staff to delay or defer consideration of item fourteen until tomorrow. They're seeking some legal advice. Apparently, there's been some statements or decisions by a parliamentary select committee the last couple of days about development contributions, and they relate to the commencement provisions. And when the development contributions policy has to comply with those new provisions, and we don't have clarity, legal clarity on that yet. So staff have asked us to defer item fourteen until at least tomorrow. So we'll move on to item fifteen, which is the review of the warm Dunedin targeted rates trial.
Can I put forward a, a suggested wording for what we might be about to do?
Just to... I'll send you, if you've got a motion. I'll get through question time, questions, and then I'll come back to you if you've got a motion. Well, is there, would you like to kick off, or would you want to take questions straight away?
Would it be helpful to just give a phrasing of the three, of the three options? So the report reviews the costs and benefits of the trial. I think the benefits, you know, known to most people, that we've got more than five hundred homes are warmer and more officially heated now. The scheme was intended to be rates neutral, but in effect, it cost about thirty thousand of rate payer funding in the past year. So there's three options outlined in the report. So if the first of the scheme continues for fourteen, fifteen, it can be delivered at rates neutral. If it continues for two thousand and fourteen and beyond, it'll cost approximately thirty K per year. And the third option there is to discontinue this, to discontinue the scheme. So really, we've just put the options to you to decide.
Questions, councillors? Councillor McTavish?
Thank you. I've got two questions. The first is the default rate of six point five percent. How does this compare with normal rates on, or default rates on rates payments? Do you know?
Hmm. That's one question I hadn't come prepared for. Our default rate is actually reasonably low. I'll just see if Ghana might have the answer to that. Sorry, I should have said it through, really? No, I could find it out. One of the things we said about the warm Dunedin is that they had to go onto direct debit, because we do actually have a really good response rate with that. We were very careful when we approved them, and the people that have defaulted actually had a good history, good payment history prior to that. So it's disappointing that the default rate's been as high as it has.
Have, has anyone been turned away on the basis that they don't have a good?
Yes.
Right. Okay. And my second question, oh, maybe I should leave it. It's just a bit of a clarification around cosy homes, which it suggests that this is a new offer from A C A. But I think it just needs to be clear that it's in, it's their existing quota. It's not a new offer, and they're seeking support to get that existing quota filled, so.
I think that's exactly right. Ginti, we learnt that. That's been a bit of a moving feast ECA's offer to us.
Thank you.
Councillor Wilson?
No, I'm sorry. I just downed, so.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thanks, your worship. Would it make any difference financially for the modelling if we were to expand the scope of the scheme to include other energy efficiency alternatives? For example, PV or solar hot water or whatever?
Yes, it would. It would cost considerably more, so that would very much impact on the debt reduction strategy. And I guess you'd then have to look at people's ability to pay, because you're looking at much bigger ticketed items for particularly solar hot water and PV. So then you'd probably be looking to spend it out over a longer period of time.
It would cost more because, I mean, there wouldn't be the option of just doing fewer installs on the same financial...
But per rate payer, the cost for PV would be much higher than the cost for insulation or heating, I would have thought.
I'm not completely sure on that, but I think one of the ways that would cost us more is just in terms of assessing products. It's just in terms of assessing products. Like, if we're to add a whole range of products on to this target rate, we'd have to work out how we gave advice, what products were allowed to be used or not. And I think we could get ourselves into a quite, quite costly process, because we wouldn't be able to, like, rely on ECA as we do with the insulation and clean heat.
Right. But you are, we are open to that as a, in the future, to expand the scope of that. We're not tied to this particular model.
I think you could do anything if you have unlimited funding.
Bearing in mind the cost and the debt reduction strategy.
Councillor Van de Wissens?
The anecdotal evidence that I have from a number of people is that the ECA-approved installers have been a lot more expensive than if they'd used just any old installer. Can you confirm that there has been a significant extra cost involved in going through the process and having to use ECA-approved installers?
I guess I'd say that most of our installers operating in Dunedin are ECA-approved or have been approved to be part of the scheme. I think you can always question with schemes like this whether the market has been fixed by the, by the agencies sort of set up, like by ECA's set up. But I don't think that in Dunedin now, you would be getting a cheaper rate if you didn't go through the service providers that we've approved as part of the scheme. Yeah.
Okay. And the thirty thousand dollar per annum administration fee? I believe that when we debated actually getting into this, that I brought up the potential costs of administration, and we were told at the time that it was going to be cost-neutral to council. Why is it that thirty thousand dollar per annum administration fee, which you now see is not just necessary for last year for the startup, but it's going to be an ongoing? Why was that not anticipated?
In the current year, that cost has been incurred because the scheme was stopped, and then it was started again over two financial years. And the original modelling was done for it all to be done over the one year. But because there was unused funding, we extended it. So we had to bring in, somebody was employed to do that, and there was an additional cost for that that the scheme could not sustain over more than one year. Going forward from fifteen sixteen, a lot of the work that's been done in finance, we've just absorbed that as part of business as usual. But with the manual nature of it, it's quite time-consuming. And every year, we add in three hundred, four hundred more rate payers, and so we're doing them all on Excel spreadsheets. We can't continue to do that and make sure that it's not going to be errors and do as business as usual. So we would, we're factored in here to employ a point two five of an F T E. Plus, we're looking at whether we need to get some software. And I think we've talked in here about a Wellington model. We've since found, since the report's been completed, that that Wellington software is mostly just a loan funding model, and it's not, it's not probably the best option that we would look at. And so we would need to look more widely to see if there's a way that we could do it smarter, and then maybe reduce the impact on staff.
Okay, thank you. And the, the very high eight percent interest rate? You've mentioned that it's, that it's been disappointing, that you've had a few defaulters, despite people having previous good, good records. Is the fact that people are prepared to ignore such a high interest rate and get into it anyway, not a suggestion that perhaps these people really don't have a good financial grasp of what they should be doing? I mean, it's, it's not loan sharking yet, but it's getting right up there, especially when you can get very substantially better interest rates from, from the bank. Is it not the case that when people go into an agreement with an eight percent interest rate, that they really don't have a good grasp of what value they're getting?
I guess there's two things I'd say there. The eight percent is a reflection of the cost, average cost of interest to us, plus the one percent for the administration to recover our costs. So we couldn't do it for any less than that. I think for some people, it's been promoted by a lot of the suppliers, and it's easy, maybe. And they possibly haven't looked at what the other options are. We can't get into the market of giving investment advice, because that ties us up in all sorts of other web tapes. But we are, there is an option for, say, the lower income people to maybe go to the ECA's scheme, the free one. We're definitely referring them to that. But we can't really intervene. We have to rely on the fact that people use their best judgment and what option they could take.
Thank you.
Councillor Calvert?
Two different sorts of questions. Do we have any information?
Do we have any information on what proportion of the installation that's being done in Dunedin is done as part of the scheme or how the Dunedin housing stock in general is going? Or how, who's doing what proportion? What I'm asking is that new houses don't have installation installers and altered houses, renovations, don't have installation installers because they don't get somebody special in. The builder just puts it in. So ECA's got this special little idea that it has to be an official installer. But I suspect most of the houses that are being done to, anything to by anybody in Dunedin, are actually done by builders, most of the installation. Do we have any feeling about that? I mean, we know how many are being renovated in Dunedin and which of these, every time somebody takes something off the wall or the ceiling, they're probably putting in insulation, but none of that is going anywhere near the installers.
So no, we don't have information about that to hand, but possibly could follow up with the building, our building control team and see whether they can, you know, provide any help, any feedback on that?
Yes, because I'm wondering whether we therefore are unhappy about what they do when ECA says they have to be special people. Most of what's happening isn't done by these special people. Does that mean ECA thinks a new building isn't properly insulated because it hasn't had an official installer or?
No, I think, I think ECA, my understanding is the reason that ECA have approved installers is because they're primarily talking about retrofitting, so it's not a new build. And their concerns are around, you know, if you, if you put in the insulation in a way that doesn't take notice of things like electrical points and things like that, you can have fire hazard. So I think that's the reason that they advise that you have approved installers.
I think there's another aspect to this too. Just because it's builders who put insulation into new houses doesn't mean they don't have to do it to the standard. The issue is not whether you qualify them or not, although builders would be. It's achieving the standard because we all know that if you put in insulation badly, it doesn't work. So I don't think there's a same distinction between, you know, retrofitting and a new build and who does it as you might think, because they have to do it to a standard. And if you didn't do it to a standard, you wouldn't get a code compliance for to get the new house.
Builders aren't approved installers?
No, no, but they're assumed, almost grandfathered in if you like, because they've got a qualification. They're licensed building practitioners and that covers insulation as well, I would have thought.
So we would, would we be prepared to accept a builder who was a, an approved practitioner builder doing insulation then for our scheme? Being as, as you say, they're usually competent and they're doing it all day long.
I think we could, we could definitely look at that if you continued the scheme. We've taken on one local provider who wasn't ECA-approved initially and they went through a process with us where we audited a certain percentage of the jobs that they did and they're now part of our scheme. So I guess we could look at, look at that if the scheme was rolled out.
Just because it might improve the uptake if?
There's just a cost involved with that because we rely on ECA to have done the audit, to tell us that the people meet all the health and safety standards and so on. If we have to do that ourselves, there's a cost involved in that, is all.
The other question is what's happening with the poor people who were cold and now they're slightly warmer, but they haven't been paying their money?
We continue to follow up the debt in the same way we do with any other rate paid debt.
What do you want?
Just on that issue.
So that was my question. There's the, there's a call on the value of the property at sale or whenever for the step as well, just like normal rates.
There is, yes. So we have, we can go to the mortgagee if we need to. It's not a step that we take lightly. So we take all reasonable steps that we can to recover the debt.
So it's just that when we're talking about the solace, we're not talking about a final loss. We're talking about a delay. It's a cash flow issue, right?
And the mortgagee knows, I mean, how, what sort of information do the mortgagees have potentially? I mean, I see something in here suggesting that the staff are spending time making sure that a house isn't sold without it. So presumably there's no obvious way of a purchaser knowing that the DCC's got a hoc in somewhere. I'm just wondering how the hoc works.
We put a notice on the limbs. So when we get the application in the first instance, we put a notice on the limb. And when the application's approved and taken up, we put another notice so that it's quite clear. So if purchasers and real estate agents are doing, and lawyers are doing their due diligence, they will know that it's there. There has been one instance of one that slipped through the cracks. And then they, with a little bit of help from us, they managed to get that back from the vendor who'd actually gone to Australia.
councillor Law?
Yeah, my question a wee bit is, I'm just struggling to understand the 992K. If we went for, say, option one or two, the additional debt, that is all it is though. It's not actually gone across the taxpayer as such, is it? If everyone pays their bills, it should be cash neutral to the.
So the original envelope was about 2.25 million and we've spent that over two years. And so what we were trying to do is identify, well, how much money would we need to fund for the take-up for the next year? And so what we said is, well, what's an average of the last two years? And it came out at 992. So theoretically, that's what we need to borrow to allow for each year for the take-up for the warm Dunedin. And then that gets repaid over the 10 years as a target rate.
Yeah, by the time it's repaid, providing there's no defaulters or very few defaulters, it's going to be relatively neutral to the rate.
That's the theory.
Yeah.
councillor Wilson?
Just taking it further, how other councils deal with this as in their books? Because I'm just testing and just came out of something that Robert said at his presentation. I may have got it wrong. Do all councils deal, and there's quite a few now doing this, do they all deal with this as a debt in their books? As a liability in their books or some other way? Do you know how they're doing that?
I don't know of them personally, but I think David has talked to Greater Wellington, so he's got knowledge of that. If I could just ask him to give you his insight.
Speaker chair, there's no other way it can be dealt with. It has to be a liability on the balance sheet. That's what we're dealing with.
Okay, but the, or the balance of that?
There's an asset on the balance sheet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, from sundry debtor and rates. And on the other side, there's a, shows up in your public debt position as a liability.
So in the account itself, it's net neutral, except for the admin?
Yep.
Okay, it's just, it's just the way we focus on the debt side of it, perhaps because that's where we are as a council, but not looking at the other balance in your pan. I just wanted that for clarity. Thank you.
councillor Thompson?
I'm just wanting to clarify some phrases here. I'm looking at other councils' involvement. One of the things that makes this a kind of a scheme of last resort is the fact that the GST is on the, because it's going out as a rates bill, you're paying interest and GST in essence. And so it becomes, technically called it the finance rate, but if it were, it would be quite high. Am I correct? So, but in the description of other councils' involvement, it talks about, for example, Nelson, City Council provided interest-free loans. Now, are you using that term loosely? Were they actually loans or were they actually the same as what we're doing? And likewise Auckland, Palmer's support are using the same phrase, but I'm not sure whether they were doing it the same way as we are or whether they were actually doing it as a loan.
A lot of that set-up stuff was done by the former energy manager who probably had a bit of this earlier knowledge. So we're probably just scrambling a little bit to sort of consolidate what we know between us.
I think that's a mistake actually, because I think that they all had to be targeted rates and there was a lot of concern amongst the councils that we're doing it not to call it a loan. So I think that's just.
Could that be clarified? Because I mean, certainly in my view, we went with what was, what we were advised was what was required to do, which was very much a second best option in terms of trying to make this affordable for the people who were wanting it to be affordable. So I would really like to know whether or not there is an alternative. I must suggest that it's one we should follow necessarily, but I think we need to understand.
I know certainly with the legal advice we got before we went into it, it was very clear that we could only do it as a targeted rate. To do it as a loan would have got us into strife with the credit contracts and consignment. And that would have been quite outrageous for us.
I understood that that was going to make certain difficulties for us, but I'm not sure that it made it legal for us. I think we looked at it and said, this is going to be awkward. And also, it's a loan, it's going to be a loan to the person and not to the property, if you like. So to the extent that the person left town, we would still be chasing them for a repayment, as I say. But, but it might equally be feasible that a loan can secure it against the, I'm just asking for some clarification.
That is the difficulty, is the security of the loan. And the same way that we've talked about some other things just recently. And so we have to be sure that we can, we've got the security and the security is against the property. And so the targeted rate is the best way of doing that.
So you think it's just loose use of terms?
I think so.
But if it's not, I'd like to know.
Okay, we'll follow up. Through the chair, one of the staff members has just gone to check with Nelson now what the situation is there.
I understand that there have been some bureaucratic costs and because of the constraints of ECA, there may have been some additional costs in those areas as well. But I would like to look at the bigger picture. And the question really in my mind regarding whether or not we continue with it, despite the high interest rates and despite the shocking suggestion that we might go to 9% in 2015, is would most of these houses not have been insulated if it wasn't for the scheme? It's a less than ideal scheme. We've got a lot of government constraints. We've got some essentially rate payer subsidy of it. But to my mind, if, say, you know, 400 of these houses just wouldn't have been insulated, then I still think that despite the costs, it probably is, it has a net value for the city. So, I mean, it's not an easy question, I know. But do you have any feeling at all for whether or not these houses would have been insulated anyway mostly? Or do you think the scheme actually has created a whole lot more new insulated houses? If the, if the latter is the case, I can happily vote for it despite its problems.
Part of the reason this report's come today is that we have been, since the inception of the scheme, saying that we'll do a bit of an evaluation of the scheme. And it's not a in-depth evaluation, but on page 15, eight, in the first bunch, is the responses of the people who have participated and 67% of them said they wouldn't have insulated their house if it wasn't for the scheme, so.
But you think, you think that's actually reliable?
It's the best information that we have. We've certainly interviewed enough of them for it to be a decent sample. So, and 99% of them felt we should continue the scheme. They think it's a good scheme. So, you know, the data's there.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, councillor Calvert, you have a motion that you wanted to.
The motion I have is that the council, and I'm not sure I've got the word right, words right here, continues the warm Dunedin scheme for the next year with a review before consultation of a long-term plan, which I gather is the right thing to do before we do that next year because it becomes a long-term plan. And the reason for choosing that is that I think there's some more things to be teased out during the next year. It's cost neutral during this year and ECA told us earlier that they would, they've got a sort of a 10-year plan about how much of houses should be insulated within 10 years.
Shall I interrupt? Is there a second? councillor Van Veen?
I didn't know whether I had to explain before anyone was likely to support it. Didn't know where to go with that.
Well, I thought it was a bit of advice really.
I'm confident. Yeah, so it seemed to me that during the next year, we could tease it out a bit better and it's cost neutral. That ECA may well change its support, and they do from time to time, but they're quite wedded to a 10-year out sort of option about giving people, and presumably Dunedin is a major target for them, some support. And that if we think about it in the long term, rather than are we going to do it for a couple of years? Are we whatever? We've got the next year to think about what's the best way of achieving that and leveraging off ECA and the 10-year out plan to achieve warmer, cozier 10-year out people. So it's the background for why I've suggested that.
councillor Van Veen, do you wish to speak to it now? Any other speakers?
Well, just briefly, I support this and the reason for that is because of the cosy homes partnership that is in its fledgling stages and which council will be receiving a report on in early June. I think that they will have a view on this as they develop their strategic work going forward. And it would be helpful, I'm sure it's implicit in this, but if that review was in consultational liaison with the warm Dunedin group. Because I think, yeah, it would be a sensible way to go about it.
councillor Thompson?
Look, I obviously, I really do support it. I moved it originally and I really do support it. 500 homes, it's a lot of homes. And one of the big problems that Dunedin has is its, is its housing stock. And we talk about wanting to be a city that people are attracted to come to, but our housing stock is one of the significant disadvantages. And to the extent that we are able to, this is actually quite a significant achievement. And if most of these people wouldn't have otherwise done it, then I think it's worthwhile. I'm concerned about what its real cost is, not to us, but to the people who are paying it. It is a high-cost way of doing it, but for some people it's the only way. And it's the only way, it appears, we can make it possible for them. So I'd like to certainly see it continue in the next year and hopefully into the future. But I think that's a perfectly sensible way of dealing with it.
councillor Pick?
Thank you. I can speak with a face half numb. What have you been thinking about? We have to stay positive about this. I think Dunedin, as other speakers might have said already, has, has an issue with this. If we got 18,000 or 45,000 houses that really ought to be warmed up, I think we've just got to push on with it. So I support this.
councillor Law?
Yeah, look, I'm absolutely in support. I think councillor Van Veen said earlier that some of the people that do this are not the brightest with their maths. Look, I think for some people, they don't have the option. It's just simply they don't have an option. And I would actually have gone further and said, continue it for a couple of years. But I think the other thing we've just got to remember is that these are the most vulnerable and weak members of our society. They're getting a huge benefit. And councillor Hawkins referred to PV and solar hot water. I've got no confidence in solar hot water. We simply just don't have a climate where you get a payback in your lifetime on it. But with this project, you make a difference from the day it's installed. So fully supportive.
Well, for myself, I really support this. I think in addition to the general housing issues that councillor Thompson has referred to, which I completely agree with, we know that the cold, damp housing that Dunedin has results in a lot of negative educational and health outcomes, among others. So this hits a lot of buttons and I fully support this. I think it's a good way forward. councillor Calvert, would you like to exercise your role of parliament?
Just a wee bit of clarification. The ECA scheme is a little bit different and it's producing another part of, of the solution to the problem we've got. What I wanted to do though was to have the ECA scheme thought of while we were thinking of ours and whatever leverage is going between one and the other for any of our people, sending them the right way between one and the other and making sure that we add it to people's options, not reduce them.
Oh, thank you. I'm going to put it now. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, carry. Thank you. Now, on to the findings. Thank you, Pete. Item 16, the smoke-free policy implementation. Right, do you want to preface this with anything or do you just want to go straight into questions? Grant's question? Councillors? Questions? There don't appear to be any. Councillor Calvert?
Sorry, just, we question, is this suggestion in there that although things will be done as money's available on the whole, they might need to be coming back to us for some more money? Would that be during the course of this year? Under the option A scenario?
No. Councillor McTague?
Thank you. I just wondered, in relation to, well, first of all, the Health Promotion Agency, is that, what sort of entity is that? Is that associated with the DHB or with the Public Health South, or is it a government?
That's a government organisation.
Okay. I'm just wondering whether any conversations have been held with Public Health South around the, or a potential contribution towards the costs of option B? Or whether perhaps that could be undertaken? I mean, what I was going to suggest is that we basically hold this space, and if other partners want to come and fund that, then great, and let's charge your head with it. In the same way that we kind of, we have a, we're meant to have a list of street names, which people can draw on. This is almost like a list of policy initiatives which we have agreed to, but which we can't afford to fund. And if others are willing to fund them, then we can roll them out.
So, Public Health South have told us that there is no, they've got no guaranteed funding for signage. We can get the free signs from the Health Promotion Agency. We have to order those in batches of 10 at a time, and you can only get so many within a time period. So, Public Health South have said they'll order some for us, but they don't have any funds to fund signage.
Thank you.
Just to add that, we would very much be taking a partnership approach to implementing this framework, so looking at other opportunities as they came up as well.
So, if we authorize option A, that implementing the measures in table A2 using existing budgets, that doesn't preclude options B if for whatever reason funding is available from some other agency? Thank you.
Good question. Councillor Why?
Looking through this, do you have a plan? Like, if I'm a smoker and I'm watching my, I've got one child on the playground and I'm watching one playing soccer on the sports field, do you have a plan on how that would be implemented? You know, as you're saying that I can't smoke anywhere at a...
Well, the policy is not going to be enforced. It's about education and moving society's perceptions about smoking. And, you know, it'd be up to other park users or sports ground users to, you know, to mention that to a smoker who's smoking next to a kid's sports field.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. HPA, as I understand it, is now the umbrella for what was Smoke Free and ALAC and various other health agencies, is that right?
It's a reasonably new organisation, a central government organisation.
But they're in charge of the Smoke Free brand?
I'm not sure whether they own the brand, but they definitely support, you know, and work towards it.
Okay. Under this, included, under leases and service level agreements, included clause in all new leases requiring tenants not to smoke indoors. Where is that not already the case?
It's not in all our leases at the moment. Obviously, commercial tenants can't have people smoke, you know, workers smoking indoors if it's a public place or a workplace. But some of our community housing leases, it's not in all of those.
Okay, thank you.
So, that is quite a significant change for our community housing sector, our social housing sector. That no new tenant will be permitted to smoke inside the social housing.
It is in some of the lease agreements at present, but this is actually making it a council policy to put it in, you know, in all leases for community housing.
So, would it be fair to say then, I mean, you've answered the question about the sports fields, that it's not going to be policed, but it's sort of going to be enforced by the other spectators giving someone the evils when they light up next door to them? But we're going to use the relaxed policing policy we have with McCandrie Bay Freedom Parking and expect the community to do that by osmosis. But in terms of new leases, and where a, for whatever reason, a current social housing unit is vacated, the lease will make it smoke-free. So, that is quite a change, which we might support, but it is quite a change.
It would be a change for it to be a formal council policy to state that, yeah.
So, can I just clarify, picking up on that? You'd say that some of the social housing leases already include that. So, what was the trigger for putting it in some? Was it, did it come at a certain time in every lease since then? Has had it included, or did someone make a decision on whether someone's allowed to smoke in the...
I can't answer that one, yeah, I'm afraid.
Nicola?
No, sorry, I'm not able to add that, but we can follow up with City Property.
We're just really following up on councillor Benson's question. I mean, if it's been, if it's been an informal policy from a certain time, then it's not as big a change as it might have been had it only been applied in certain circumstances, but not on others, and I don't know if they would have been. Councillor Calvert? Oh, sorry. That suspends me.
Just in terms of, I know that quite a lot of rental properties these days do have a clause that requires the tenants not to smoke. But in terms of our social housing, would it be fair to say that the maintenance cost of our social housing is higher where the tenant is a smoker than where there are non-smokers?
None of us have qualified to answer that, but I think we'd assume so, yeah.
So, there's a cost to the, effectively to the ratepayer for the allowing of smoking within a council-owned social housing unit?
Councillor Calvert?
As for the social housing, is the, if we've got a policy of saying you're not allowed to smoke in new ones or whatever ones we have, and we're not enforcing that, or are we enforcing the property ones? I mean, does it fall into the same sort of thing as having a dog? I mean, presumably there's a no pets or something clause in some of them too. So, does that mean we sort of just, we sort of put it in there for a feel-good thing, but we don't actually care? Or do we care and throw people out if they either smoke or have pets if that's a rule? Or what are we doing with the rules we have in our tenancy agreements, including that one?
Through the chair, we've just asked somebody for a representative to be sent over from City Property to answer those questions, because we're afraid we're not able to answer them.
Councillor Bant?
When you get applicants for social housing, do you get requests from any of them that you know of for a smoke-free house? And/or do you get requests for a tenancy agreement where they can smoke?
Well, that'll be answered by the property people when they...
Okay.
The, would someone like to move something? I think I'm quite happy for questions to be asked of the property people when they get here, but I'd rather not lose time by...
I'd like to move option B.
Is there a second?
But I think councillor Benton probably needs to clarify. Within option B, there's an HPA-provided sign option, and there's a purchase and install local design options, option. So, it's almost like BA or BB.
Yeah, BA then HPA provided.
BA or...
What's BA? Unfortunate, but there we go.
So, on...
Why does that, that zipper's, you're going to split that down? How many tippers from option A? I'm confused now.
Well, option A is within current budgets, and this isn't...
Well, so is option B, isn't it? It's $1,200, that's the difference.
Is it a total of $10,200 for option BA or B1?
Yes. So, just to clarify, there's an extra cost of $10,200 for BA over A. So, A is within, just, I'm making sure that we're all on one page, and I may not have got this right. A is no additional expenditure outside current budgets. B is 10,000, BA is 2,000, $10,200 extra. And BB is 17,000 extra. So, you're seeking a second for BA?
Yes.
Right. Is there a second for BA? Doesn't seem to be an appetite for that.
I'll move A.
You'll move A. Is there a second for A? Councillor Hawkins?
Table A. Option A, existing budgets.
That's right.
Yes, may I speak to it now?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm supportive of this, not supportive of the other two proposals with the associated cost for reasons that will become apparent. I think we'd all acknowledge the huge social change that's happened in this country in recent years in this area. And clearly, that's going to continue. I think it has enough momentum to do so and what's more. I think we quite clearly lead the world in terms of this public health initiative. However, I have a concern in urban design and aesthetic terms about what I consider to be the proliferation of signage disease that has stricken this city and this country. Having been provoked yesterday by the colleague on my left showing me the no freedom parking signs at McCandrie Bay, I think this disease has got a very strong hold on us. And I think a lot...
I told you not to upset him.
A lot of our streetscape in general attractiveness of the city is destroyed by the moronic location of unnecessary signage, if I could put that so delicately. So, I'm pleased to see that the suggestion in this motion, this proposal, is that as the opportunity presents itself, appropriate wording can be added to signs on their rotation cycle. Because the last thing I think we need to see is a further set of whatever signs stuck up at considerable expense, not only for their purchase, but also for their installation unnecessarily all over the place. It will very quickly become known to people that what the expectation is in regard of, in regard to this extra layer of public places. And I think social pressure will achieve what throwing money at it, in this case, would be unnecessary to do.
Councillor Tosh?
Look, I'm slightly conflicted in this in that I'm...
You're a smoking advocate, aren't you?
I've been badly misrepresented, only when we lock people up and don't allow them to leave. I mean, if we were to do that in our social housing, then I would not support this.
I withdraw.
Right, but the comment I just wanted to make, and it's really in response to a couple of questions or comments around the DHB's contribution. I think it needs to be just noted that the DHB is already spending a significant sum of money on exactly this. And so, really what they're seeking is for other partners in this cause. It's not a case of the DHB wanting other people to fund what they're not. They already are, and it's, this is a very mild end of the spectrum. Support it, but I just wanted to make that clarification.
Any further speak? Councillor Bant?
I have some sympathy with councillor Benton Pope's views on signage, but I also have quite a bit of sympathy with the people who find themselves in situations where they've got a smoker right next to them in a public place or in some situation, who they put a little pressure on to say, look, I'd really rather you didn't smoke, and get the response back, there's no bloody sign here that says I'm allowed to. And they carry on their merry way. The fact that the Health Promotion Agency are prepared to provide signage, and all we would have to do is just have the small cost of installing it, to me is an opportunity, which I'm afraid we're going to miss here. So, I'm not into spending extra money, as you well know, but I believe that the overall benefits of keeping the pressure on people doing harm to themselves by smoking. And that pressure, I think, is well-served by having signage. It's one of the few signage issues I don't have around the place. I think we've got an awful lot of other signage which we could well do without. This is one lot of signage I think there would be, I think, a good argument for. But having proposed the motion and not even got a second, I'm quite happy not to take any more of your time, having just put my view.
Thank you.
Well, just briefly, your worship, and just picking up on both the point made by councillor Benton and that made by councillor Benton Pope. I think councillor BP will be stoked to hear that, I think there's a review of destination management signage underway over the next year or so. And I think Sophie Barker is leading that work. So, maybe through that piece of work, there might be an opportunity to lag up this as something and perhaps get a bit more progress than might initially have been anticipated specifically in relation to some of our key destination locations. So, yeah, fingers crossed.
Any further discussion? Right. Did you get some information from Public Services?
I'm afraid we're having trouble pinning down somebody to come over. Rhonda's on her way now.
I just thought it was, it might inform this, but I'm not sure it will to any great extent. So, you'll write a reply, councillor Benton Pope? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carry.
Does that mean we're not going to hear from Rhonda about the answers to our questions?
Well, I just want to clarify that because I understand she's on her way, but I also am aware that we're about to break for lunch. So, I mean, I'm having for her to come immediately after lunch and ask anything she has to do or answer any questions. Can you let her know that...
We will, thanks.
Now, councillors, we'll break now. What do we, want to come back here at 20 past? Is three quarters of an hour enough, or what, an hour? I'm happy to go with whatever.
I think councillor Calvert and I have an issue that we probably have to deal with at quarter past, and it will probably take about a quarter of an hour. So, I don't know, we can just arrive a quarter of an hour late, but...
We'll come, we'll come back at 25.2.